Hi, my name is Cindy Segal and I'm the host of this podcast Leaders on the Right. And we're excited because we have Mary Nan Huffman. Houston, city council member, District G here today to talk to us about what's going on in Houston. Some of the upcoming City of Houston propositions, but why don't you first tell us a little bit about yourself? What your background is? I know you're an attorney, right?
Absolutely. So I was a prosecutor for 10 years. When I left the DA's office, I was the chief of child exploitation, internet crimes against children. Child trafficking was really my specialty. After leaving the DA's office, I became an attorney with the Houston Police Officers Union. And that's kind of what I'm doing right now.
And so how is it different being a city council member? Because you also ran, you were the Republican candidate for the Harris County DA's. So how is this different than working in the DA's office to then being on city council?
Well, being a prosecutor, I have to say, is the best job that I've ever had. Especially working in the child exploitation division. It was the most rewarding job that I've ever had. I mean, we literally, I got to save kids every single day. And I had people ask me, they said, man, well, you know, you must have seen really sad, sad things. And of course we did, but the benefit of, you know, getting these kids out of really bad situations. And then, you know, prosecuting these offenders, it was just, it was so awesome.
So do you, as a city council member, I mean, we hear the stories that Houston, which is not something to be proud of, is the, what is it, the sex trafficking capital of the country or the world? Do you have opportunity, based upon your experience helping with the DA's office? I guess that was Montgomery County, right? Do you have, are you doing comparable work? I mean, do you still have a way to help those kids since it's obviously a passion for you?
Absolutely. Currently, I'm on the Board of Directors of Children's Safe Harbor, which is Texas's seventh largest children's advocacy center. And if you don't know what a children's advocacy center is, you know, think about 30 years ago. If you found out that your child had been a victim of abuse. Typically, you would take your child downtown to a police station. They'd probably be interviewed by a regular police officer who didn't necessarily have any special training in child abuse cases. Then the child would have to go to downtown Houston to have a medical exam down there. They'd wait, you know, in the emergency room along with everybody else. Then the parents would have to then go to the CPS office, meet somebody there. They would have to go to a different location for counseling. And so these children's advocacy centers that are in Texas, it's basically a one-stop shop to heal the mind and bodies of the children who have the courage to, you know, stand up for themselves and to, you know, battle physical and sexual abuse. And so they come in, they meet with somebody who's specifically trained to talk to children. The interviewers ask non-leading questions and they have everybody working in one location. So the parents come to one spot, they meet with police, they meet with CPS counselors. They have, you know, medical professionals there, they have equipment that is child size. And it's really just been a game changer. It helps with everybody working together and kind of co-locating them on space. We collect better evidence, which makes our cases better. So when they go to court, a lot of times, you know, we have people plead guilty instead of going through the whole trial process, which can be, you know, really, really hard on somebody.
So does the City of Houston, do you look for nonprofit groups to handle that? I mean, does the city have a role with helping prevent?
Absolutely. You know, I think, yes, the city does, but really, every single one of us can have a role in trying to prevent human trafficking. The mayor's office has the Office for Human Trafficking that was started. And other cities around the United States are looking to Houston's office that the mayor created to do similar things, you know, in their big cities. So it's been, it's been very successful, but I think as long as we have, you know, the Houston Ship Channel here. And, you know, it's always going to be a problem. When I was at the DA's office, I worked really closely with Homeland Security. And I always thought, why is Homeland Security, why are they in the realm of child exploitation? And what I learned was typically, child exploitation was a border issue. You know, we had children being trafficked from other countries, but we also had, you know, big child pornography problem. And so before the internet, those pictures had to be traded by hand or by mail. And so really, that's why Homeland Security took on that role. And Homeland Security actually had the problem tackled until the internet started. And then now we just see so many images coming across online. I don't know if there will ever be a real handle on the problem.
So tell people where, you know, what parts of the city does District G cover?
So I am in charge of the west side of Houston. And if you're looking geographically, my western border is Highway 6. My southern border is mostly Westheimer. My northern border is I-10, but I go all the way in through, from Highway 6 through the Galleria area, River Oaks, Upper Kirby, and East Shepherd is my nor, is my eastern quarter.
So that district was really impacted by Harvey?
Absolutely.
So what, you know, luckily, we've gone through, knock on wood, we've gone through the hurricane season without any significant event. But I think it's, even though it's been five years, a lot of us are still very much aware and worried whenever we see a big storm engulf that will have another large hurricane. So I know your area was particularly because they, it was your district. And I know you weren't on city council at that point, but it was your district that they let out the, they thought they were safe and then they let out the reservoir.
Yes, and I was one of the people impacted by that. So we were okay when the rain stopped and my neighbors were, you know, high-fiving in the streets, we made it. And then they released the dams and we had 13 feet of water for 10 days and we lost everything. I had a three-month-old and a three-year-old at the time, which made it even more difficult. But then I'm also, you know, we have young friends that came over that helped remediate, tear out sheetrock when it was time, but my in-laws, they're quite a bit older. They lived even further west, Houston, they were underwater a week longer than we were. And, you know, they didn't have people like that come into their aid. So once my friends were done with our house, then we all went and, and did their house. But it was, it was a really, really terrible experience and I hope that nobody ever has to go through that again.
So that has to make you more sensitive as an elected official now that you have to do what you can to protect, so it doesn't happen again.
Absolutely.
So how do you translate that from private life to public life? I mean, was that the issue that was a driving force for you to run for city council? Or were there other issues that why you even chose to?
I think, yes, Hurricane Harvey was a big driving issue, you know. The city says, oh, we want you to be resilient, we want you to rebuild. But we flooded in August and by February, you know, we still didn't have permits to rebuild our house. And how do you expect us to be resilient when, when we can't start the rebuilding process? And I don't care where you live or what job you have, nobody puts into their family budget a mortgage for a house they can't live in, rent to live somewhere else, bills at both places. It's just not a thing. You know, we all deserve to feel safe in our homes, whether it's from floodwater or whether it's from crime. And I think working at the DA's office and then now we're, as an attorney for the Houston Police Officers Union, you know, the crime aspect, when I was on the campaign trail and when I was talking to people in the district, that was the number one thing that people were concerned about. Number one was crime and number two was flooding and infrastructure. You know, I have been out on officer-involved shootings with HPOU. So I go out on officer-involved shootings, in custody deaths. I get to help defend the police, which is an incredibly awesome job. But we ask these first responders to do this really important job, but we need to make sure they have the resources, they need to be successful. And, you know, Sergeant Preston, he was an HPD sergeant, he went out on a domestic violence call. He was the first sergeant to arrive on scene. And the suspect was inside his residence with his wife that he was holding hostage. And the suspect shot Sergeant Preston through the window and hit Sergeant Preston in the neck and the head. And some of the officers on scene said, man, you know, we just, we couldn't get to Sergeant Preston. He was laying on the ground dying, but we didn't have a bulletproof shield. And if we just had a shield, we could have gone, we could have put it up against the window and we could have got to Sergeant Preston, but we didn't have a shield. And thinking, oh my gosh, how much does a shield cost, right? And then, you know, some of the officers on scene, they didn't, they didn't have first aid kits. You know, their supplies had been used in other calls and the ones that did have fully stocked first aid kits, they had bought and stocked with their own money. You know, I know that when somebody calls 911, that may be the most important call they ever make. And I sure hope that if I call or one of my family members calls, that the first responders that do show up have the things that they need. And so really, I think it was a combination about, you know, crime, law enforcement, wanting to be an advocate for first responders. Then also, you know, the infrastructure part, I feel like Hurricane Harvey has left a permanent mark on me. Because it just really was just such an awful experience.
So is there anything that you're really proud of that you feel like you accomplished? Or that you still wish you could accomplish?
Well, there's still definitely a lot more work that needs to be done. I came in during a special election last year in 2022. Most council members get four years before they have to run again. So lucky me, I get to do it again this year. So yes, there's absolutely more work that needs to be done. But one of the things that we got this year on council, the mayor started the, the Stormwater Action Team. And basically, this is kind of for smaller projects in the district to help with drainage, to help with flooding. And this is things like clearing out the bar ditches, making sure that the drainage inlets aren't clogged. We have a lot of residents that, you know, in West Houston, put up fences in the city's right-ofways and easements that are now impeding the flow of water, you know, these ditches need to be cleared. So we've been working really hard to take care of some of those things, to make sure that no one is flooded because of things like encroachments or fences into city right-ofways. Now, we are also working on getting the underground water detention basin out here in West Houston. I know that that's been talked about for a long time and I feel like people are starting to lose faith that this project is actually going to come to fruition. But we are getting a whole lot closer and I think that will make an enormous difference. You know, Harvey happened in 2017. I wasn't on council yet. But sometimes we have a disaster in Houston and city council wants to show that they've done something. So they make an ordinance saying that if your property is this large and you're gonna, you know, build on it, then you have to put in so many square feet of underground water detention. And I think that the problem with the City of Houston is that it's not always a one-size-fits-all approach. You know, we know that West Houston is way different than downtown or midtown or Montrose or the Heights. And what works in some places don't necessarily work in other places. And so I think, you know, on the agenda soon, we're gonna see some changes to this water detention requirement. There may be a fee in lieu of or doing bigger water detention in a certain area instead of each individual property owner having to put in their own water detention under a property because it's really, really expensive. And so, but I think we need to look specifically at the problem and look at, take a more individualized approach instead of just saying, okay, a disaster happened, you know, one-size-fits-all, now we have to, everybody has to do the same thing.
So you're one of the few conservatives. How many members are on, I can't vote, City of Houston elections? But how many people are on, serve on Houston City Council?
So there's 11 district council members that, you know, cover the City of Houston. And then we have five at-large council members that are over the whole entire city. And then we have the mayor. So there's 17 of us total.
And the mayor determines the agenda?
Yes, the mayor is the one who puts everything on the agenda.
So how do you get something done?
You know, that is the question, right? I think that being on city councils, a lot like being a mom. I think you can't fight every battle. You have the things that you're passionate about, you have your hard nose. But if you fight everything, people stop listening to you. So I think it's a lot about forming relationships, working with other council members. I know that, you know, there was a former council member who just personality-wise, didn't like one of the other council members. And so would not work with that other council member just because they had fundamental disagreements. Well, I may fundamentally disagree with the other council members on there, but find the commonalities, find where you can work together. You know, council member came in, she had the southbound lanes of Westheimer, I have the northbound lanes. If we need to redo Westheimer, it makes sense to do it at the same time. And guess what? We got Westheimer done. So I think we need to look at really, what is the best for the City of Houston? Put personalities aside and be advocates for the people in the district. I feel like that's something I've been successful with.
Well, you know, and it's interesting you said that because we had Morgan, Congressman Morgan Luttrell was our first person on our podcast. And I asked him a similar question about Congress and he said the same thing. He said there were things that fundamentally, you know, he'll never agree with the Democrat congressmen, women. He said, but there are other issues that they, that there would be things that they could work together on. You know, and one of the ones I think he mentioned was related to child trafficking, sexual trafficking. You know, so I think we sometimes forget that in this day and age where everyone's, seems like they're butting heads together. But how do you get, if the mayor controls the agenda, how do you get something? I guess you have to get the mayor to buy into it.
Right, you have to get the mayor to put it on the agenda. So whether it's having meetings with him or having meetings with other city departments, recognizing that there's a problem or that there's an issue. And then, you know, talking about, you know, how can we move forward? How can we get some relief for, for this area? You know, things like that.
So how does, how do you deal with a city that's the size of Houston? What are we now? The third largest city in the country? And I know you've got, how many people do you represent? How many are in District?
Well, we just went through redistricting, so after redistricting, there's, you know, a little over 200,000 in District G.
So how do you, you're representing a particular district, other people are representing their district. You've got a mayor who sets the agenda and then you've got the four or five at-large.
The five.
So how do you, how do you advocate on behalf of G? If I'm in a different district, like you said, I don't have your issues. How do you get the votes? I mean, it's always about getting enough votes so you can get something done.
Sure. I think that, you know, like I mentioned earlier, you know, there are council members out there that there may be issues that we can't agree on. However, most of the council members that I have worked with, I have been pleasantly surprised with the collaboration and the deference to the council member in the district. So if there's an issue that is really important or an issue comes up on the agenda for, that's, you know, in District G, a lot of the council members will defer to the district council member. And typically, these are things, you know, things don't just show up on the agenda out of nowhere, right? Most of the time, these issues have gone through different committees, we've talked about them, they've been vetted. We've heard different perspectives and, and so we work on things that way.
So, so what's the budget of Houston now?
Six point two billion.
That's a lot of money. You know, I don't know if you're aware, I represented Bel Air as one of the small cities on Metro.
What haven't you done? You have done so many things, city. I mean, you really have.
Don't say you're on Metro. But, you know, there's a, was a huge difference going from a small city. And, you know, being an accountant, I can normally, you know, keep track of numbers fairly easy. But then going to Metro, which was two billion, not even close to Houston. It was hard to, you know, you hear about government waste and we need to, you know, cut back and we need to do this. The larger the organization, the harder it is to do that. So how do you stay on top as a conservative? You know, being concerned about representing the needs of your district, but also recognizing that as a whole, you know, having a strong economy, not outrageous taxes, making it a place where there's quality of life, but yet it's a still reasonable place to raise a family, cost-effective, I guess. How do you balance that? I mean?
It is, it's a balancing act. You know, I think that when I, since taking office, I have been to 153 HOA or Civic Association meetings since taking office. I mean, that is, that is a lot.
Yes.
Just since last year. Right, two little kids. So it's hard, you know, I think going to those meetings keeps, keeps me connected to the constituents in District G. And they really are my eyes and ears. And most of the time, you know, they're, the issues are, you know, my trash isn't getting picked up. Or, you know, my, I have potholes in, you know, this street. And so I need the people in the district to be my eyes and ears to, you know, although I try to make it around the area as much as I can, it's a really, really big district. And so I need to, to know those issues. So I think going to those HOA meetings, civic events, hosting things in the district, like we had a HOA information expo, we've hosted pet food pantries, food distributions, all of those things. I've spent thousands of hours in the district to keep me connected there. But also, you know, looking at the big picture, you know, we want to encourage business. So we want to make sure, you know, is the permitting process something that is encouraging people to come in here and do business in the City of Houston? Or are we making it so hard for people that we're pushing, you know, new development, restaurants, things like that, out into the county because they can do it for half the time and half the headache and half the money? So it is a balance, but I like to tell the constituents on District G, there is power in numbers, right? And so not only do you get me as your representative, you have the five other at-larges. So actually, you have six council members that are directly working for you. So a lot of times, it's working with the at-large council members. A lot of times, they do more, instead of, you know, maybe constituent-specific issues, it's more policy issues, you know, things like that. But working with everybody, your at-larges and your district council member to have six people doing what's best for West Houston and the whole city.
So I'm gonna put you on the spot here. My daughter lives in the Heights and I see that her recycling doesn't always, like sometimes she brings over recycling to Bel Air. So, and you hear complaints like, you know, Fifth Ward, we're not getting this done, where they're getting it in River Oaks or, you know, wherever. Do you think that there's a fairness of how the services are provided? Is it sort of left up to each council member with oversight? Or is this something that really is in the mayor, in his department?
I think each district has specific issues that they combat. And so where some districts I know have a really big problem with illegal dumping. We don't have as big of a problem with that in District G, we just don't. I mean, so I think it's using the resources in the district, the council district service funds to help with specific issues that the constituents are having. And, you know, figuring out, you know, because some of the issues are specific. Now, some are citywide, right? Everything could be, you know, you could take a fine-tooth comb and everything could be, it can always be better, right? Absolutely. But I think it's, you know, having those relationships in District G, we have, I think we're, we're probably the district that has the highest number of private trash. So the City of Houston will subsidize the HOAs per household for us to hire, you know, our own trash and then, you know, come and pick it up.
So if I were your constituent and I had a pothole or a sidewalk needed to be, what's the process for someone who's watching and it's like, well, I'm really upset because of this? What do they, you have, do they still have the 311?
Yes, 311. So yes, 311. Whether you call my office directly and whether I put it into 311 or a constituent calls 311 themselves and puts it in, that's kind of the first step. Everything goes into 311. And basically, 311 keeps track of all the requests that come in through the city. And the more requests they get about a certain issue, kind of sometimes prioritizes it and bumps it up the list. So really, that is kind of the first step, putting it into 311. Now, we tell our constituents that if you put something into 311, please also send my office an email or call us with the 311 reference number. That way, we can follow up on the issue, we can make sure it doesn't get lost in the system and we can just kind of keep track of it a little bit better. We also like to have the 311 number because say you call 311 and you see a water leak outside. Well, we want to be able to monitor it because maybe the water leak was prioritized a certain level. Maybe it wasn't leaking too bad and it was prioritized low. And now the leak's gotten worse, but, you know, people aren't calling back into 311 because I already reported it. So it's just something that we want to stay on top of, make sure that if the leak gets worse, that, you know, it bumps up the list and, and things like that.
Well, you know, and I always thought when I was on Bel Air City Council, you know, you assume because a constituent calls you up and says, I have a pothole. You notify the city, you tell them, you know, hey, there's a pothole on such and such street. You assume that it's being taken care of, you know. It is definitely the squeaky wheel sometimes. And if you don't hear back, you know, you, I mean, you follow up, but no news is good news sometimes. And sometimes that's not the truth because it still is a problem and it didn't get fixed or it didn't get fixed the way they think.
Well, I think one problem with the Houston Public Works, and we have, I have talked to Director Haddock about this, is that when a call comes into 311, say, like a water leak. So you call the regular 311 and say, there's a water leak at this intersection. The person who put in the water leak checks back on the internet the next day and it says case closed. But it's still leaking. And so the constituent thinks, well, why would this be closed? And it doesn't actually mean it's closed, it means it's just been transferred from that step to the next step. It's a little, you know, I think sometimes, you know, words mean things. And if we could just change some simple things, like the wording or the ability for constituents to be updated, then, right, then it may go a little bit smoother.
So let's talk about crime. You'd mentioned that. And I think that that's been an issue that we all are concerned about. And Houston's really no different than, I mean, heaven help us, if we become like a Chicago or, or San Francisco. I mean, New York. And I think we've been blessed. I think most people are concerned about safety and have been supportive for the police or constables. But, you know, you represent the Houston Police Association. What do you think, do you think we're moving beyond or that we're becoming safer? I know that that's been a huge issue. And some of it's a function of perception. And I've used the analogy when I'm talking to people that, you know, you shouldn't, you shouldn't be able to live in a neighborhood which can afford its own private police or Bel Air, that's a small city that has its own police department. Everyone should be safe and know that their kids are gonna be safe and their spouse, you know, that their family and friends will be safe. So do you feel like Houston's making steps in the right direction? Or do you still, because you've got a unique role because you're more tapped in than probably the normal council member. So you see it as elected official, but you also see it because you're talking to the actual boots-on-the-ground police officers.
I think that we have great police officers out there that are trying really, really hard, that are trying to be creative, trying to come up with solutions. And the chief of police right now will tell you that crime is down in the City of Houston. Well, it may be down from last year, but last year was crazy, right? And so when people hear that crime is down, but they don't really, like you said, perceive that it's down or they don't really feel like it's down, then that's not very comforting. And even if we got crime down super low, even if crime was almost nonexistent, if you became a victim of a violent crime, you would still feel like it's not enough, right? A hundred percent. I've lived in Houston now for 15 years and I've had two different houses broken into three different times. And it stinks every time, you know, it really, really does. When I started working at the police union in 2018, we had over 5,500 officers. Today, we have 5,050. It's not just a City of Houston problem, it's a nationwide problem. Before the George Floyd incident occurred, nationwide police applications were down by 67% nationwide. After the George Floyd incident happened, it was straight down after that. So the Houston Police Department is having a hard time with recruitment, retention. Nobody wants to be a police officer. I mean, I sure don't.
Now, would you want your son or your husband to be one?
You know, I really wouldn't, but, but we need, I know.
We need it.
We need those people. And, you know, being a police officer, just like being a teacher or, you know, some of these other professions on the front line, hospital workers, it really is a calling, you know. Nobody becomes a police officer because they want to hurt people or, I mean, they just, you know, they do it because they care about the City of Houston. And working with HPD, I have 100% seen that. Now, it doesn't mean that all police officers are good, right? You know, we know there's good and bad people in every profession. Now, it doesn't mean that all police officers are good, right? You know, we know there's good and bad people in every profession, but. On, as a whole, I feel like um, most of the police officers that I've worked with are good people.
Well, and I think when you get to know police officers and I knew the ones in Bel Air, but. Police, good police officers, they don't want the bad police. They know that it, you know, it, it's not a good thing and they're just as upset about it. But they do have an incredible, incredibly difficult job and I think. You know, and it's different. I saw it when I was Mayor of Bel Air. It's different for police officers. Than it is for firefighters. Firefighters are going in thinking, you know, I'm gonna save that life. And they're, they're both first responders, but with police officers and I heard it from our city manager, they're thinking, well. This may be the day that I pull over a car to give a traffic ticket and they shoot me. You know, and Bel Air lost, uh, you know, we lost one of our police officers. We've had police officers shot before.
So I think anything we can do to, you know, help the police, show that we're here, that we're supporting them. Since being on council, I've spent over three hundred and fifty thousand of my council district service funds on. Um, resources, technology and equipment for the police. We've bought ballistic vests. We've bought cops for the station in case there is a natural disaster.
Buy a shield?
Yes, yes. Um, we also bought, you know, mobile um, fingerprint readers, so. To help identify suspects when officers are out in the field. We've also, I've provided uh, mobile license plate readers that go into the patrol cars, so that way every car that drives by. It reads the license plate like the officer, you know, sitting in there manually typing it in. And then um. This last year, we installed the flock camera system in District G.
Mary Nana, I know that there's a couple city propositions uh, on the city of Houston ballot. Can you talk a little bit about them?
So Proposition A is the proposition which would allow. Three or more council members, if they agree that something should go on the agenda, then the mayor has to put it on the agenda. Oh, this has never happened before in the city of Houston. We have a very strong mayoral form of government. Which makes collaboration hard sometimes. So um, I think that this will be a good tool. Um, to allow certain district-specific issues to see an agenda that may. Not otherwise see an agenda.
That you can push some of the things that you care about. If you can get two more votes, it seems like a good.
It does. You know, I think the concern is that agendas will be bogged down, that council members will put every single thing they can find to others. They'll put every single thing on an agenda and it'll make city council meetings really, really long. But the people that I've worked with, um, my colleagues are very thoughtful. They really are and I don't. See that as being the case. I think that before something makes it on an agenda, we will see it in a committee meeting. We will see it vetted. We will see collaboration. Um, you know, people will, will brainstorm and, you know, kind of flesh these ideas out or flesh the ideas out. So. I think that at least it will give the council members an opportunity to, if something's very important, to get it on the agenda.
Okay, so that's the first proposition. What's this, there's another one?
Proposition B is uh, having to do with HGAC and um, and. Having a proportionate amount of, you know, representation. Depending on the size of, you know, we know HGAC encompasses thirteen counties.
Explain to people what.
So it's the Houston Galveston Area Council and it's a regional um, group. That is, you know, we know that flooding, it doesn't just happen in Houston, that, you know, water flows from north to south, from. You know, west to east and, and so you, you encounter multiple counties, precincts, city council districts. Um, and we all have to work together to come up with the best plan. I think the criticism from. From what, since I've been on council, I've heard that, you know, we only have two people on the HGAC. Um, board that get to vote, where the city of Houston, I think is about thirty seven percent. Um, population wise, um, so if we, it seems like we need to have more representation on there from Houston. I think that the concern is that, you know, when we flooded in Hurricane Harvey. A lot of money came to the city of Houston. I know that the people on the west side, we didn't see any of that money. And it's really frustrating uh, that when. Over and over and over again, you see funds come into the city of Houston and those funds only get spent in certain areas. So I think the concern is, is that if it was proportional, the money goes to Houston. And the same people that care about the same areas over and over again, the rest of the city of Houston. May not get the benefit of it. So it'll be interesting to see um, what the voters decide. And um, you know, and if, if that goes through, what do you think about it?
I think that city Houston is already the biggest, you know, elephant, dog in the game. That, you know, I look at it from a small city. We don't, you know, we have all these little cities gathered together and. I think it was at least years ago, it was one representative. So our feeling is always like, well, Houston's always big. They're always gonna get what they want. Houston and the, and the county, so um, I probably wouldn't vote for it. Um, which, you know, will wrap up, but I do wanna thank you and I do wanna tell people who are watching that Harris County Republican Party does not. Endorse in a primary, in a Republican primary, but we have made, which we are allowed to do per our bylaws. We have made some endorsements. In the nonpartisan races, which is school board races, city of council races. And I'm proud to say the Harris County Republican Party has endorsed Mary Nana Huffman for District G.
And I just found out this weekend that I got the state GOP endorsement too.
And then in terms of the two propositions, our executive committee, uh, which is made up of eh, five hundred plus precinct chairs. Has in fact come out and said that we're not supporting, uh, we are supporting Proposition A, which allows three council members in the city of Houston. To put an agenda item on and we're opposed to Proposition B, which is HGAC. Uh, giving Houston more representation. So thank you for watching and thank you, Mary. Your rights.